Members of the City Council, please attend the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, May 24th, 2016, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Dr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Ms. Simmons? Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Dr. Patton?
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. During this evening's public work session, we have a visitation, two presentations, and a media preview. First, I will describe the unit you are about to visit. The Hazmat One is a 2006 Fire Liner Rescue Command Unit. The City of Portsmouth Fire Rescue and Emergency Services is the lead hazardous material team in the Combined South Side Regional Hazardous Materials Response Team, which includes Portsmouth, Virginia Beach, Norfolk, and Chesapeake. Our new Hazmat One will join Hazmat Two. And the difference in Hazmat One and Hazmat Two is that Two is a different vehicle that carries more of the equipment. The new vehicle has many features. These include the ability to transport four personnel instead of two. It has two research stations inside of the command post. It is enhanced scene lighting capabilities, an external display monitor, and a larger equipment storage capacity. The truck was built by Hackney at a price tag of $287,000, using total aid to locality grant funds from the state of Virginia. The truck is housed at Station One on Effingham Street. I yield to Ms. White.
Yes. Members of the City Council, we're going to break for about five minutes for you to actually go down and take a look at the apparatus. So if you would, we have an elevator waiting for you, and you're going to go down and take a look, and then you're going to come back up, and we're going to continue your work session.
Very good.
Mayor and members of City Council, as we continue our public work session, our first presentation is a Fire Rescue and Emergency Services update presented by Fire Chief Duane Barnett, who joined our team on March 14th, 2016. It will be followed by a second presentation of the Department of Parks Recreation and Leisure Services Summer Raise Program for Youth. And Mr. Mark Furlough, the Department Director, will be the presenter. Chief Barnett?
Thank you, Dr. Patton.
These were given on purpose or was it to promote the parade? Right now they're good. Good evening, Chief. How are you doing?
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. All right. Mayor and members of City Council, I want to thank you for this opportunity to provide you with an update on the Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Services. During this presentation, okay, thank you, I will review for you my 90-day plan, a few key decisions I made, and a summary of key items that we intend to address in the future. First, our mission. The mission of the Portsmouth Fire Department is to protect the lives and property of the citizens and visitors of the City of Portsmouth against fire, sudden medical emergencies, hazardous materials incidents, and natural or man-made disasters. Our vision, which is the vision that I had in my swearing-in speech, is to cultivate a diverse, modern, innovative, caring, and compassionate department that operates safely, is competent, and responsive to the community. My 90-day plan. The 90-day plan was developed to ensure that as a leader and a key decision-maker, I had a good understanding of the expectations, the issues, and the intricacies involved with the role of Fire Chief as it relates to the city government, the Fire Department, and the community of Portsmouth, as well as the Hampton Roads region. Building trust and establishing relationships, as well as ensuring fiscal responsibility and the delivery of the expected core services from the Fire Department are also key objectives of that plan. Since March 14th and moving forward, I've made a few key decisions. In keeping with our theme of review, reflect, and refocus, I'm working, I continue to work with human resources to ensure that the alignment of employees is in concert with the city's position control. I've also redistributed personnel to provide staffing for Ladder Three in Churchland. With this redistribution, we have enhanced coverage for ladder trucks within the city. Ladder trucks provide elevation during fires, respond to EMS calls and auto accidents, as well as other emergencies such as the Hazmat Unit. Also, I moved forward with hiring and the promotional process. On April 11th, nine firefighter trainees entered the Fire Training Academy. Today, seven remain. And that is an old occasion, what happens with training academies. Some of our key next steps, there are several major initiatives that we will be working on during the next six months. We will conduct strategic planning for the organization. We will review and implement recruitment and hiring processes to ensure we attract, we are attracting and hiring a diverse and qualified candidate pool. We will implement community risk reduction activities and programs to include hands-only CPR, fire prevention and planning, hurricane preparedness, Save Me Saturdays, the checkup program, smoke detector installation, and overall fire and EMS education. We're also working on establishing, or I am working on establishing, a solid infrastructure to ensure that we have an organizational structure that supports the mission and that we have policies and procedures in place for a high performance and accountability. A little bit about our major core services. Emergency medical services. Two Fridays ago, we received a national recognition award for providing consistent care of heart attack patients in the last 24 months. It is the American Heart Association Mission Lifeline EMS Gold Award for our STEMI protocol or heart attacks. We are one of 26 EMS agencies in the state that have received a Mission Lifeline Award. We are one of four agencies in Hampton Roads that have received this award. We are the first city in Hampton Roads to earn the gold. Last week was EMS week, and we did a, we did a few activities throughout the community. We conducted a pit crew demonstration to show how we manage CPR incidents for Mr. Pace. We conducted health and wellness screenings and hands-only CPR demonstrations at Krogers and Harley-Davidson, the Harley-Davidson dealer. We also attended the farmer's market on Saturday. Our EMTs were there, do some demonstrations also. And fire suppression, while fire suppression is a lower volume of calls, it's the most dangerous and labor-intensive of the type of incidents that we respond to. The suppression units also respond on most of the EMS-related emergencies, which are in addition to their fire suppression calls. And the picture there is the quarters on London Street, the fire we had that. Emergency management. We're working on three major initiatives in emergency management along with the other work that we're doing. These initiatives consist of the City of Portsmouth submission to the Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Regional Plan, performing emergency operations center upgrades, and formalizing training for department heads and our regional partners. This year, we will conduct exercises with the Tywater Community College and the Norfolk Naval Shipyard, which are requirements for them as well as us. Community engagement. I have formed a community outreach and education committee to focus on community engagement from a fire and EMS perspective. We are currently attending and participating in community events, civic league meetings and civic league meetings. We will be teaching CPR to 25 seniors in the JROTC program at IC Norcom. I believe that's in June, coming up this month. We will also be partnering with the Red Cross to check smoke detector batteries and install smoke detectors in the Craddock community on June 25th. We'll be there from, I believe it's 1:00 to 5:00 PM, and we hope to deal with about 200 to 300 smoke detectors or batteries or whatever it's need. And that's it for the update of some of the major things we do while we continue to do our other work. And as was mentioned, it was on the news last night, that we have an ISO rating of two, which is one is the best, so we're just one away from being the best, and that's, you get those due to your response times, your training, your record-keeping, and all those sorts of things.
Now, break that down as to how that two fits in Hampton Roads. Who else has that status and...
Honestly, I don't know what the other regions have. I can even tell you, getting to a two and a one is not easy. It's not just the Fire Department that's looked at, it's the water systems, which that agency deals with, Fire Department doesn't necessarily. So I'm not sure what Hampton or Newport News or what they have, but I can tell you that a two, getting to a two and a one is not an easy feat, so that's pretty good.
That news story said that, I think it was Newport News had a one, I think it was, Portsmouth had a two, and everybody else was somewhere behind that.
Distant. So we were distant.
So we were, contrary to what we've heard about, but our response to that. I have one other thing I want to ask you, if you'll remind me.
Yeah, go ahead.
What is Save Me Saturdays?
That's...
Explain to you what Save Me Saturdays is.
I got all the rest of them, but that one I didn't.
Okay. One of the things that we have been looking at in terms of community engagement, and
with the incident or the bombing in Brussels, it talked about how 95% of their countrymen and women were prepared with CPR tourniquets and things of how to take care of somebody choking, and that the agencies who put that on and taught the people were their rescue fire systems. So to engage the public, first of all, years ago, all department heads had to be certified in, as CPR. That was a requirement for us, and we stopped that. So first, we're going to receive our certification, in case something happens, we can respond. And then we're going to open up to the public on a Saturday that whoever wants to come and learn how to deal with, the chief even included in there, a piece of how to be calm in a state of emergency. Because the research shows that oftentimes, we become so alarmed, we just won't even respond right if we knew. So that's the purpose of Save Me Saturday, another community engagement activity. We look to put on four between now and August.
Chief, talk to me, if you would, about our readiness. We get a lot of information or misinformation times about what we are able to do and not able to do, things that we lack, all of those types of things. And again, these data that we get, the awards you just received, clearly that can't be true if we're doing those types of things. But again, citizens want to know about our readiness, where we are with our folks being trained, where we are with our equipment and things like that, that are ready to move at a moment's notice. Do you have a scale or some type of way, do you measure all of our equipment, all of our things, and where we are at, and how you put that in a rotation to keep it there from a readiness standpoint? Just how do you do that?
All right, well, that's a lie. I don't have, yeah, but...
One thing is, you know, we're in a political season, and there's a lot of misinformation, and we need to make sure that citizens know that we have our readiness and tack, and we are ready to respond no matter what the incident is. And oftentimes, we don't respond to people that either come up to the lectern or wherever and say things like they heard, and we got these many broke trucks and all of that stuff. Normally, we don't respond because you don't want to get engaged with the citizen, but you hate when they make those type of statements on television because of the viewership, that there may be something there. So since you're speaking, can you just, just in a summary for...
I could tell the citizens, we're ready. We, I don't, since I've been, I don't know of any calls that we haven't responded to. We are able to respond to the calls, we're ready. We have, now and then, our issues are sometimes with staffing. If some people call in sick, we may have to put a unit out of service. That's what, I guess they're speaking to. But we don't operate solely, we operate under a mutual aid agreement. So even if we have an engine that we have to say put out of service, because we don't have the staff, and we call Naval Shipyard, and they come out of the shipyard and run the call with us. They came to on the call with the quarters.
You do the same with them.
And we do the same with them. If they call us, we go there, Suffolk, Chesapeake, all come. It's not automatic aid, but it's mutual aid, so we have those resources available to us. What they were speaking, what I have understood them speaking about was the, of course, the whole Ladder Three in Churchland. And so what we did, I talked on there about how we redistributed some personnel to move, to put that ladder more consistently in SERFs. We still have the staffing issues if somebody calls in sick, but what we did was we had another unit that's like the Hazmat units, our technical rescue unit. And it doesn't have a ladder, and it's not in Churchland. So, you know, when I looked at it, and I looked at Churchland, I said, we do need another piece of apparatus out there to respond. Really more, it was the EMS calls I was more worried about. We'll get to the fire calls, we have a lot coming. But if you have an EMS call, it's a long distance for another call to come. So we moved some personnel around, we got that ladder in service. So now, we were talking today, we've even had more responsiveness in the Churchland area, and by having another ladder truck in service, which the rescue doesn't have, a fire anywhere like the quarters, that ladder truck can respond in. When we look at, I, the Fire Chief and our staff, look at our response, we look at the whole city, so we don't just look in specific neighborhoods. We have to look at a city response and then a regional response and how we move things around. So we're ready. You asked about equipment. There are some equipment that are ongoing, they have to be changed out, especially in the EMS realm, at certain dates where they go out of service, so you have to replace them. And we're always working to upgrade and maintain the pieces of equipment. And we have in the budget, we're going to get two new engines, so we'll have two new, and two, two replacement medic units plus two additional medic units. So we'll, we're going to be looking good here, hopefully around December, January, when those come in, to even be more ready, I guess, if you will. Thank you very much.
Yes, Chief. The information presented on Ladder Three, there's been a lot of discussion at our council meetings, as you said, about that. And just wanted to make sure that the citizens are clear, that you achieved this staffing of Ladder Three not by new hiring, but by redistributing.
Thank you.
Okay. So evidently, you saw that there were persons within the Fire Department that could be distributed to other areas within the Fire Department.
Yes. And, and yes, that is exactly what we did. We did not hire new people to achieve that, use existing personnel. So to do that, we still have a unit that, that technical rescue unit also runs auto extracations, things like that. So it is a unit that we need, and once we get up to full staffing, we'll put some personnel back on it. But when you do a risk benefit and the amount of times that unit is called and what it can actually do, we'll get more out of a ladder truck than we will the rescue. So if we have people here on a less utilized unit, I'd rather have them on the more utilized unit. And that unit, to be clear on this, is not out, the technical rescue is not out of service. It's called single pulling, and it's a common thing in the fire service. You have a crew in the station, if they need the engine, they get on the engine. If they need the rescue, they get on the rescue. The only problem would be if they was out, if they were out on the engine and they needed the rescue, they'd either have to get back, or just like we do with the Hazmat unit, we have to come get it and bring it to the call. But the other, the calls, the majority of the calls that that unit runs, the rescue units, the other units can handle till it gets there. If it's a big enough, the building collapses, things like that, you know, we're going to need it, but...
My second question, and you mentioned it about diversity. What are your plans for trying to achieve that?
We have to do, number one, in our strategic plan, that'll be a major goal of our strategic plan, is to increase our diversity in recruiting processes. One thing, in my previous department, we were pretty successful at achieving, and that is, you have to actually go, you have to put concerted effort in going out and finding people and educating them on this career. A lot of, especially in the diversity realm, they're just not educated on the fire SERFs. They have no idea, never, don't even think it's something that they can do. So it's a lot of effort, resources to go out and do it, but that's what you have to do. And you actually go find the people who want the job, and then who are also qualified to do the job, and then that just starts to grow. I don't have exact numbers, I don't want to throw false numbers at you, but I'll just say, in my previous job, we increased diversity from not very many women to like a quarter of the department was women over a couple of years. And that's through going to where they are going, where industrial athletes, so it's going to where you have industrial athletes who would say, yeah, I'd like to do that, I like an outside job, or I like a job dealing with EMS and fire and teamwork. You go to places with teams, the military is letting people get out all the time, we need to be there when they get out saying, come on, you know, we got a place for you and be right there. And that's, you just have to, it's a lot of work, and there's no, I haven't found any tried and true formula for it. You just have to go make yourself available and educate. And once you do what we find, then that starts to just grow. Once you make the first steps, each one tells one, and then, hey, you can do this, and they go back and tell their family and friends, and we become our best recruiters. So as we grow, it grows exponentially from there, but we have to get that first lead.
Are we using our professional folks that we work with, Old Dominion and psychologists and all with the police piece? Are they doing anything with us on the fireside?
We are, we are actually just looking at the violence and crime prevention, only police and schools, and then the community engagement in it, agencies, agents.
So if that's the case, then we seeking any type of professional outside help to help us with increasing the diversity in our department, whether it's recruiting or strategies or things like that. We've had, and I said this to the police chief, everybody comes in and want to try their own thing, and it don't work, and we wasted a year. There are people out there that can help us with those things. We need to make sure that we're taking advantage of that. And, and again, if you've done it in other areas, you know some of the things that work. But there, there are companies and organizations out there that are helping. If you go to some of these other places that are extremely diverse, they have used those people. I don't know who they are, I'm not questioning anybody, but there are people out there that can help you. And also, when you engage those folks, they tend to know the network of folks that will come to your area and help you with recruiting. So anyway, I just encourage you to do that as well.
Okay, Mayor, I'll answer that differently. I thought you were speaking of fire being a part of the balancing crime. They're not a part of that, but the police chief and the Fire Chief are meeting with an entity that is discussing with them, and it's Dr. Morris who, who we worked with for their recruitment, who has worked all over the nation with, the closest is Newport News, who increased their, helped them to change their whole process and recruit about three months, who they hired 35 new officers. So we are, they are meeting with HR in that kind of conversation.
And just a quick question for you. Does that process have any kind of hiring preference for military, prior military or anything?
Current process, I don't believe does. I mean, I have to follow the civil service, so the answer is no.
Even they came out, they were firefighters in the Army, they had to go through the whole, the whole...
They'd have to go through the whole thing, currently, today, unless they had a state, even though if they were firefighting in the Army, they'd have to have Virginia State certification. But usually, we find, and we tell them, it's not a problem, they'll go through it. You know, they like to train, they don't even mind doing the training again, honestly, so they'll go through it. Yeah.
So where are we on revamping that whole Civil Service Commission piece?
Well, the, the whole piece with civil service and its, what it require is actually in the city attorney's office. It has to go before the state, and that, our goal is to have it before in our upcoming legislative package, which will be prepared September, October, and ready to go in November. So since I've been here, so in September when I came, I shared with you all, that is where it has to start in order for us to be ready to move forward. So it's a priority.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Good job. Yes, sir. And by the way, you mentioned the quarters. You get great reviews from not only the owner, but several of the residents that were there. I came the next morning, and I think we displayed somewhere around 50 or 60 people in that one unit, and there were some out there, and they had nothing but great things to say about the Fire Department and your response and what you did there, so great job.
I haven't had a chance to say, but when I was coming here for this job, I'll tell you that people I know around the region were telling me how good this department was when it came down to firefighting and EMS, that this is a looked-upon department on how to do business. So that's, that makes that easy, so...
Thank you. All right.
Now, we will have the Parks Recreation Summer Raise Program presentation by Mr. Furlough. Thank you all. Thanks, Chief.
Now, Dr. Patton, is this a bike rider, or is this a kayaker? Or this last week, he's been doing it all.
Relay for life.
And relay for life, that's right. Friday night, I was out there, waited about 10 o'clock, and he was serving popcorn, so he can do it all.
It was a successful...
Yes, it was. Very good. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. I am Mark Furlough, your Parks and Recreation Direct, Parks and Recreation and Leisure Services Director. Tonight, I will be presenting to you the summer information on the Department Summer Raise Program. Summer Raise is an acronym for Recreation Aiming for Youth Success. Sports, arts and crafts, group and social activities, character counts, swimming, field trips, breakfast and lunch are all components of our Summer Raise Camp Program. We currently operate seven Summer Raise sites. Three of the proposed sites offer before and after care that operates from 6:00 AM to 6:30 PM. These sites are Churchland Elementary, Simondsdale, and Craddock Middle. The remaining sites are open from 7:30 to 5:30. In addition to the seven regular sites, we offer four Summer Raise specialty camps, including Sports Camp at Cavalier Manor, which consists of basketball, baseball, soccer, track and field, and a variety of other sports. Cheerleading Camp at Churchland Middle School. Cheerleading for all sports has become a popular activity for youth engagement and fitness. Participants learn the basics of tumbling, dance, safety, as well as cheers. Teen Camp at J.E. Parker. For ages 13 to 15 years of age, the camp follows the activities of our normal Summer Raise Program. And our Therapeutics Camp, which is a partnership between the Department of Parks Recreation and Leisure Services and Portsmouth Public Schools. The camp will allow special needs students to participate in adaptive activities throughout the summer. Golf continues to gain popularity among our city's youth. The Second Annual Portsmouth Junior Championship will be held August 20th and 21st for youths between the ages of six and 17 at Bydaway Golf Course. We will also offer three sessions of our Portsmouth Junior Golf Association Golf Camp at The Links in June and ending in August. There's no better way to cool off on a hot summer day than a trip to the neighborhood pool. Summer is the time for water-related activities. Our Summer Raise Pools and Splash Parks will open Memorial Day weekend on Saturday and Sunday from 1:00 to 7:00 PM. Beginning June 21st, we rev up operations to Tuesday through Sunday from 1:00 to 7:00, and the pools and splash park remain open through Labor Day weekend. The department also offers opportunities for families to recreate together through our Summer Raise movie in the amphitheater at City Park. The movies will begin June 18th and run through August 27th. Movies start time is 7:30 PM. Our Summer Raise, our Summer Program theme for 50-plus adults is our Keenagers Program. Keenagers are defined as active 50-plus adults who are engaged in programmatic, recreational, and leisure activities. This theme follows the national model for 50-plus recreational programming. You see, we offer many activities, many different activities for the keenagers to participate in, such as chair aerobics, trips, fitness, themed celebrations, sporting events. The fees for our Summer Raise Program vary from our nine-week summer camp registration fees to our after, before and after care program, to our weekly golf camps. The fees are displayed here on this slide. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Let your fees slide.
Go ahead. Mr. Church?
I was trying to figure out what the before and after cost was. I said, now, what's 275 and...
The before and, before and after care together is $100. There's an additional $100.
Okay. So 375 for, if you wanted to do...
Aftercare and daycare.
To do the, and that adds an additional, I think, hour in the morning and an hour in the evening. in the evening.
Two kids, who have to go to one early.
Now, do our citizens and the kids need to have the ID badges and all that to participate in the Summer Raise Program like they would with facilities?
No, the registration fee covers their participation in the camp.
And also, Mayor, and members of council, many of the, not many, some of the participants, for example, last year from PRJ, PRJ sponsored a hundred, so there are organizations that assists with kids being in these programs.
That was my question about those who made the assistance.
That's right.
The materials that you're showing us, the pictures and all, are these being produced by our marketing department? Well, let me ask this too.
You mean that...
Yeah, like your second slide is, second slide. Is this, the second one, just the actual second slide?
I don't believe so. I believe that it's just clip art that we...
Are we use, I mean, is this literature that's going to be distributed to attract kids into the program and parents?
No, this was just used for this presentation. One of the things, though, that we are doing is we're trying to do a better job cataloguing through pictures, through photographs, our program, so that we can use it in literature to promote our program. So we're trying to do a better job with that.
Yeah, because that slide there, the reason I was asking, because there was a slide, a picture that was used to, I think it was the collaboration with the school district, where we put out a marketing campaign to get kids to come to school. And just want to put this out there, I believe whenever we put out marketing materials, it should be reflective of the city. And so you're presenting to the Portsmouth City Council, and that picture there doesn't reflect Portsmouth. And as I flip through your presentation, it doesn't reflect Portsmouth.
Certainly.
And when I see that, I just want to make sure that, in everyday operations, that we are sensitive to that.
Certainly. And that's one of the things we're making an effort to do, is to capture photographs from our program so that we can, we can start to use some of that.
Some nice kids to, just on that. But, all right, any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, sir. Let me just say to you, I have been, and I am very visible in the community, and I've seen you at several events and activities, and I can't tell you how pleased it is from my perspective to see you out in the community, and I want you to, if you could, continue that. I know you've got a busy schedule, we've got the summer coming up with all of these kids being out, and we want to make sure every one of them are being actively engaged in activities and all of those types of things. But thank you very much.
Certainly, and thank you.
All right, Mayor, members of council, the next preview, I'll talk while she gets it together. As city departments are encouraged to collaborate and partner to ensure effectiveness and costs and financial acuity, increase the overall return on investment, the Departments of Marketing, Communications, Tourism, and Economic Development have collaborated to launch a major Rediscover Your Neighbor media campaign to begin airing tomorrow and run through the end of 2016. Over the past year, such campaigns have been launched during the kickoff of the summer season that unofficially starts this weekend. Here are some characteristics of the new campaign. The music and videos are produced and designed to manipulate through the seasons from summer all the way through winter promotion. It'll be a 30-second commercials on four different spots. It'll be aired on local network stations, WAVI, WTKR, WVEC, WGNT, and WVBT, and TBZ. It will be on cable stations such as Cox, Verizon, FiOS, HGTV, Food Network, ESPN, OWN, Bravo, other stations, and it will also be on cable stations in Weston Hampton Roads, PCTV, PSET. It'll be on the city's YouTube, city's YouTube channel, and on social media. The initiative serves as a multidiscipline and multi-department campaign to promote attractions and tourism, concerts, events, and festivals, existing retail and restaurant, business retention, hospitality, and museums. Now you are ready to preview Rediscover Your Neighbor.
And this is our communications and economic development jointly working.
That's right. Put their money together.
That's good.
It'll come. Take your time.
And why that's turning up? Is it coming out? I want to talk about some of the other ones in the past we've done that.
Yes.
I don't know how we measure those, but the ones we've run in the past have been very successful.
Just to pay you to speak to that, couldn't you?
Measure those, yeah, it's still warming up. But, yeah, some of the campaigns we've done in the past has worked well, folks have talked about it. We use some of our military families, Coast Guard family, I think, have you seen Portsmouth lately and things like, you want to speak to that while this is warming up?
Yes, some of the, some of the other campaigns we've done relative to these initiatives to promote tourism, promote some of our attractions, some of our events in Portsmouth, of course. When was the last time you seen Portsmouth? Tell your Realtor to promote residential, to encourage people to live here. Another campaign we did was the Right Side of the River Campaign, that we did, trying to encourage people to understand that Portsmouth is here in the heart of Hampton Roads. And of course, this campaign is Rediscover Your Neighbor. With everything going on with the tolling in downtown on both tunnels, we're trying to encourage people to know that, you know, even though summer's here, don't let the tolls be a barrier to coming to Portsmouth. We offer a great deal of things here in the city, livability, inclusiveness, and a whole lot of different things we offer in Portsmouth in terms of our attractions and also our events.
How about our 90 Miles of Shoreline and 360 Degrees Opportunity? Mallory, you want to speak to that just briefly? I see that at different places. I think that's a great tagline and slogan. We've used it. I've actually used it in some of my speeches. We making traction on that, or?
We are, yes. And in fact, we are using it not only in our initiative to recruit maritime and maritime-related businesses, but we're also using that to describe the opportunity. We've got a campaign going called What's Brewing in Portsmouth, opportunity to target the craft brewery market, and we are getting some traction on, on both of those campaigns and doing even more.
We ready, Ma'am Perk?
Yes, sir. Do you want to introduce it? You good now?
We're going to show you two spots. This is one of two spots that will be, start airing on tomorrow.
What kind place to explore, to delight in something old, something new, to find a gift, to make a memory? There's a place where thinking is definitely outside the big box, and, oh, yes, to play. So come, rediscover your neighbor, the new Portsmouth. Visit portsva.com.
That's the first. Commercial spot two.
There's a place where imaginations are sparked, where curiosity's reward is laughter, where history comes to play, and drug choices are heavy. There's a place not too far from where you are right now, inviting you to come explore, to come play in a different place this time. We invite you to rediscover your neighbor, the new Portsmouth. Visit portsva.com.
Those are two 30-second spots.
And that's two of, you say we have how many different ones? Five?
There're going to be four different spots. This is two of the four that you're seeing today.
Where were the locations?
In downtown, Old Town.
Old Town, Children's Museum.
Children's Museum, then Teller's, I mean, the pavilion over here.
Yes, I just don't think those presentations are culturally sensitive to, it doesn't reflect Portsmouth. And when you look at that, that doesn't look like the makeup of our city. And some may be afraid to say it, but I'm not. That does not culturally reflect Portsmouth. And I'm just, you know, I think we need to be, do a better job at that.
All right, anything else?
No.
Thank you.
Mayor, and members of City Council, this concludes our presentation for this evening's public work session.
Okay, and I noticed the handouts that you have here. Now, other thing I want to give you kudos on, the little cheat sheets or the cards that you hand out to citizens that talk about all the things going on downtown. I think you were the architect of that a few years back.
Long time.
Are we continuing to doing that?
Yes, we are. Those are the...
It struck my mind when I saw this, because it is great, and it's great seeing people walking downtown, pulling out their little cheat sheet, looking at different places and things to go and do, so, great idea.
Thank you.
Sunset Thursdays, you say we're here, we're starting June?
September 9th.
June 9th, it was Stan Howard, okay. All right, very good. And we're going to run this every Thursday until?
June, I mean, September 14th, something like that.
September 14th.
Correct.
Okay. And we're going to measure what we did this year versus our inaugural year last year to see what else we need to do to tweak this and all, right?
We'll do that, yep.
Okay, all right, very good.
Can you make sure we get one of these back as soon as you get them, you get them done?
Yes, we, I did this so that we could save some money. I didn't want to have the agency to produce the first four. They're working on the schedule now. As soon as that's completed, we will have the full schedule, make sure you have them.
Okay.
Mayor, and members of council, this concludes our presentations for tonight's public work session.
Okay, we've got a motion to go in the close, but I do want, one item here and open, our SIPSA board meeting tomorrow. I want to, if I could, just briefly, we've got two votes, Sharon, if you want to...
Yes.
We've got two votes tomorrow dealing with not only the cities and the agreement as well as the, well, I'll go ahead and let you do it. I just want to make sure we're all on the same accord with her voting yes for both of those. Again, I appreciate you bringing that up and making sure we're all in tune with what's going on in SIPSA, so if you could briefly do that.
Absolutely. Mayor, members of council, there will be two votes tomorrow at the SIPSA board meeting. The first will be a vote to allow all, to allow SIPSA to go ahead and sign off on all of the use and support agreements that other localities have already signed off on and returned back to SIPSA. We would not be one of those localities, but they would be asking for our vote as members of the board. So that's the first one. And the second item is a vote on, to allow SIPSA to go ahead and proceed and do the final waste supply contract with Repower, so that contract can go ahead and proceed. So those are the two votes that are scheduled for tomorrow.
And I think it's okay for us to support both of those, it doesn't harm us in any way, and it shows as board members that we're being cohesive with what it is the majority of the board wants to do. And when we conclude the piece that we're doing, then we can introduce that later. So doesn't that have a problem with her on voting vote?
Yeah, I'm just not clear, if, if we're not in support of the Repower, why are we voting for it?
I don't think that I understand the council to have not indicated they're in, not in support of Repower. I guess my understanding at this point is the council is looking at all of its options in terms of whether or not SIPSA is presenting the best deal in terms of going with Repower versus whatever may be out there under an RFP, so.
So in case if we come back and we see that it may be in our best interest to partner with SIPSA, then we would have already evoted?
Well, if that is the case, and I'm directed that council would like to allow the city manager to endorse the use and support agreement with SIPSA, I would then take that back to the SIPSA board, and we would ask the SIPSA board to go ahead and sign that document. The same thing that we're going to be voting on tomorrow for the other localities.
Okay, where are we on the RF?
I was going to say, Mayor, can you give it off?
Let me wrap her up real quick. I think we're good on everything else we're voting yes here, so she's clear?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And make sure we, you know, I don't know how you do that, but that they, to keep the door open.
Yes.
For Portland.
Well, I think some of the feedback that I've gotten, and I don't know from board members, but some of the other folks, that they really understand what we're doing and appreciate what we're doing and how we're doing that, and again, they always compliment your representation.
That seems to be, thank you very much. And that seems to be the sentiment that I get as well from other members of the board, is that they understand that you all need the opportunity to vet your options, and we'll be letting SIPSA know on June 14th whether or not we're going to proceed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor and members of council, the Waste Management RFP was led and advertised on last Wednesday, May 18th, 2016. The RFP is open for 14 days. It is being advertised on the state's procurement website going out to 2,000, it was advertised on the state's procurement website going out to 2,227 individual vendors. It was also on Manstar, which is a part of the state, 126 suppliers, and the MWBE from the state's website, according to notification, which we get. There have been 543 notifications. The SWAM, which is a small women-owned and minority business, 250 have been micro businesses, 290 small businesses, 2 minority-owned businesses, and one woman-owned business. So that is where it's going.
That's going. All right, very good. Now, did we have anything else before we go in the close? Have we touched everything? I thought we had a... Okay, there were some responses to Dr. Whitaker's questions. You had some questions on the, some items with waste management as it related to the audit that was given, and everybody should have received a copy of that in your inbox and take a chance to read over it, and then we'll discuss that further if you'd like. Is there anything else that I have? For some reason, I've got something on my head, but I can't kick it out.
Are they open? Are they for open? Is that why the loan repayment and the status of the insurance policy?
Yeah, I have, I have...
Oh, that's what it was.
Yeah, when you say, okay. With respect to the advanced sick leave program, we have sent out letters to former employees who participated in the program on May 6th, 2016. Since then, 15 invoices have been sent out. With each invoice...
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay.
With each invoice, detailed reconciliation, reconciliations are being completed by payroll staff to review the accuracy of the dollar amounts. The collection of advanced sick leave from prior years will be credited to miscellaneous revenue in the years it is received as the money come in. And employees who are actively employed are currently repaying their amounts through payroll deduction or hours, the reduction of hours or money, and that's the update on that.
So the 15, that represents what?
The total, well, these are the, these are 15 who have left the organization. So those are the ones that have received. The others are internal, and they've already been and beginning to pay theirs back.
And we did say we wanted to give them every opportunity to repay that.
Yes.
Or send over to any, I think, Mr....
Yes, yeah, and we are. We've, we've worked with the city treasurer, and so we're doing...
Okay.
There was another, no, that's it.
That's it? All right.
The insurance piece.
Oh, the insurance piece. The insurance piece, which Dr. Whitaker had asked in regard to, back in September, October, we called to the attention that we were looking at our insurance data and discovered that there were people who were on the insurance, that we purged and have all of that cleaned up. We are, we reported to you all the amount of money that we've received back. The only change in the amount is that Delta Dental initially had paid us $20,000, and now that amount is at 30. Vision Eye Care is $8,000, and then the Optima is, what, Optima is $38,000. So those are, the only change has been thus far is an increase through the Delta, the Delta Dental.
Okay, can, can we get an updated report showing how much was outstanding and how much we've actually collected?
We can, we will get that to you.
Very good.
Okay, that's it.
All right, Mr. Moon.
At our last meeting, there was, I think, a unanimous consensus, actually based off Vice Mayor Simmons's motion, that we would entertain giving our retirees 50%, which has been a precedent for a number of years. So I'd like to know what the timetable on that will be.
That wasn't a unanimous consensus.
I was going to say, that wasn't unanimous consensus. I think we said because it didn't affect this budget, and it was something we could look at, and I think that's what we rested on.
Down the road, and the last time we did bonuses, that was at, part of a surplus monies that we had, and that's when, and why we did it, if you recall. And that's when, and why we did it, if you recall. We went to the end of the year, we did all the reconciliation, we had surplus money, and that's when we did the bonuses. Now, let me just say, since you brought it up, I'm very, very supportive of our retirees, always have been. You know, fought for them to get the cost increases you can call mayor, and that bonus. We have been very, very good to our retirees. We spent $106 to $7 million to make sure they still got, you know, got their retirement checks. We then, even though, even though some of them signed deals saying your retirement pay would be reduced by the amount of your social security check once you turn 65, we took $20 million, which we were paying on every year, and eliminated the social security offset. Now, that gave each one of those people, whatever the amount of their social security is, was $1,000 a month, $700 a month, $12,000 a month, $30,000, that they were not getting, that they are getting now. So for us to go back now and after we closed the budget, could have, and with other things we were facing, we're facing, you know, VRS payments that we don't know the amount yet. We're facing, we're fighting some frivolous lawsuits that we've got to come up with money for. Now, those things are must-dos, so the rating agency probably won't frown as much upon those. But to go back right now and dig back into our fund balance after we, the other things were programmed in our fund balance that we were taking out is one time now, the program that's tangible, so they look at it differently. But to go back in there now, now, I'd say if we come up the end of this year with the budget like we did that year, and money's, we got extra money?
We can look at it.
We can look at it. But to dig back in there right now, when we just passed the budget and go back and the ratings just reaffirmed our ratings, to do that now, I think may be dangerous. But I may be, I asked the manager what her opinion is. Have you talked to the rating agency about that?
Yes, Mrs. Alice has, Mrs. Alice, Mrs. Alice Kelly, our CFO, communicates with Davenport almost weekly. And she shared with me, she's at a GFO national meeting right now, that when we went back to them and looked at the amount of $700-plus thousand, when we've just gotten our approval and remained our status as a rating agency, and they were in concert with and how we were doing the fund balance, that for us to go back now to do anything would send tremors and would be a deficit to us going forward.
And that's the kind of message we've been getting for the last five, six years in back, Mayor, you know, from the rating, because things that are not tangible, that we can't go out and say, you can't put your finger on it, we bought this building or we got this. Doesn't bode as well as something like this. And I'm still saying, if there's a surplus in October, December, we can relook at it. But I don't want to open that budget up again right now, especially with as good as we have been to our retirees. I hope they can understand that we have gone above and beyond. We're going to spend about $18 million this year, I think.
It's $18 million in this upcoming budget.
$18 million this year because of the decision we made two years ago to make the retirees whole.
Well, that argument can be made, that that offset should have never occurred, and in actuality, giving them money back that we took for a number of years.
No, not when we took, they signed an agreement, they signed an agreement...
That agreement was never produced.
They signed an agreement, but we, out of no legal obligation, but out of a moral, a sense of moral obligation that we thought we had, we took care of that. But had we not, they would be out, missing out on thousands of dollars a year. If their retirement check is $1,000 a month, that's $12,000 a year that somebody wasn't getting, that they're getting now, that we are going to pay an $18 million bill on this year.
Not arguing that point.
So my point is, I think that, I think they should be able to understand the situation that we're in, that we have to do what's best for us overall, and at this particular time, it's not the best thing to do. It may be four months from now, well, six months from now, in the end of the year, if we have a surplus, but right now, with all the things we're looking at doing, with clawbacks and that we're going to have to deal with, we may need that money for something tangible. That's all I'm saying.
Well, you know, we plead in hardship, but I see on here where we're going to, apparently there's a few that want to come up with the money to move the monument on Court Street. So if we're poor there, we're poor everywhere. So we shouldn't even be discussing that.
I don't know what you're talking about, but I'm talking about one thing, you're talking about something else, so...
Fair deal.
Yeah, I'm talking about money.
I think what Councilman Chair just articulated is right on point, and I think our retirees clearly understand that we went to bat for them, and we have done a lot of things, and we will continue to do those things. And again, I am in agreement, looking at that down the road when it's appropriate, but I don't think right now to be doing that, especially with our credit rating agencies and just having that review.
Just curious, Dr. Pan, what was the amount of that bonus that Mr. Moody is talking about?
It was $795 something thousand. That's a ballpark figure for the $500, for them to actually get $500, not...
Okay.
A cash, a $500 check, as the others will get a thousand.
Right, okay. All right, somebody want to take this into the close?
I move, according to closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-371187 for the purpose of briefing by staff members and consultation with legal counsel pertaining to the actual probable litigation, where such briefing or consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigation process of the city, specifically regarding potential claims by and related to the Virginia retirement system in pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-371187 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to the actual probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect negotiating or litigating posture of the city, specifically regarding to the relocation of the credit monument in the intersection of Court and High Street.
Second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Dr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Mr. Meeks, Mr. Moody.
Yes, on the first item. No on the second. I don't, I don't believe that that qualifies for a closed session. There's no litigation in the works. That item has certainly been part of a public dialogue for over a year, so I think that discussion should be held in public.
Okay, so Mr. Moody, is a no on the second? Yes, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Semus, Mr. Efsen, Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
We are in close. Thank you.